Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the next council meeting. Would you please join us in the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting order and open the roll call.
Get out.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Rusher.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
And we need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Then we need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 5, 2014 regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under Communications, anything from the public in attendance this evening? If not, we move on. Clint, what people service monthly report?
To start off, we did repair two main breaks last month. We had a four inch and a two inch. And the four inch was up on Sixth Street north, and the six inch was on Fourth Avenue north. So we did, actually did notice a little drop in our pumpage on that. We do think there's some more up around there. In fact, that Fifth Avenue north, I think we did that one stretch there. We're gonna have the leak guy come back in. He thinks there's another one there, but we got the loudest one that was theirs now on Satsfix, and he can come in and look at it again. But we still think there's something up around in there. But hopefully here, a few weeks, couple weeks, we'll get him back in down and going on that. So, yeah, we'll see. At the water plant, we've got the well side is up and running, and it is, for the most part, in the automated side of it. We're getting the chemical end of it kind of dialed in to say, you know, to try and get it. But it is starting to come around pretty good now. So, and they have some other little issues we found, just electrical, some switches that aren't, say this, they say something else. But for the most part, we're up and running that. We have been for almost about, almost a week now. So, and they've got another few little items on the spring side they need to come back and correct. But for the most part, like I said, it is up and running in the, well, I hate to use the word automatic, but that's kind of, but it's doing what it's supposed to do, so.
What are you, what are you down to for hours then, Clint? Are you?
Um, we're trying. We went, I think over the weekend, we ended up running two shifts just because they're filling the pool. So, but that's done, and it seems to be holding. So now, today, we just were down to one shift, and we may have to come in a little later for a couple hours just to double check everything. So hopefully we can get down to just one shift. So, other than that, just a few little things here and there. Waste water. We're just repairing the clarifiers. We did get some minor repairs out there to the one that we drain. We've got the east one back online, and now the west one, we have to get inside that. There's actually some welding we gotta do on that to try and straighten some of that iron out from the ice. So, but replace some check valves out there. That's pretty much about it, so.
Did I understand the generator did its job anyway?
Yeah, yeah, it did. You didn't even notice. It varies. In fact, you don't even, it's that smooth that you don't even know it's on until you look and see it's running. And like I said, but it did its thing and just kept on going. In fact, you didn't even notice anything. So, and then the fuel issue with the filling the fuel tank, all that is, is an anti-siphon device that's built in there, and it makes a couple turns on the inside. So that's why it takes a little longer to fill that. So, but no way to do this job, so I was very happy with that. So that was one of my biggest. They can come out and test it, but until it actually, something goes, you don't really know for sure, so.
Any other questions?
Does the wastewater flow at the lift station, is that increasing now?
Oh, last, when was it? We had that two inches, was it, or inch and a half last week? That real one got really dark. It bumped up, went from about 800 up to about 1,400. But then within two hours, it started dropping right off again.
So you didn't have to go to the EQ basin or?
Yeah, some of it did. Some of it did. But it dropped off. It started tapering off within two hours. And that, now we're back about down to normal again for this time of the year, so.
But we know we're still gonna let infiltration in anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We definitely, we still have that going on. So just keep doing what we're doing, I think. Hopefully at some point, we'll catch up, so.
The trailers are all ready to go, should we end up?
Yep. Well, we've got the hoses pumped. It's ready. It's all been ran. We've tested, ran everything. And all we gotta do is hook up and go. So, so it's all ready to go, so.
They have three leaders too.
The soft ones?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there enough? Can put those in at night? No, no. Or even hardly two people. Yeah. Well, but no, those, we've all got new intakes on them, so we're ready to go. So hopefully we won't have to, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Just being the time and place for a public hearing on the matter of the proposed vacation and subsequent conveyance of a proposed parcel of land known as Knights Boulevard, Blackbird First Edition, City of Humboldt, State of Iowa. I will resume the public hearing at 5:37. Aaron?
Uh, we did receive a offer from the adjacent landowners. Ben Nedvitz here on behalf of the landowners. The, the offer was for 9,000, as the city had previously discussed, with legal fees being covered by the landowners for the transfer. No abstract being provided, just the quick claim. The, there are some issues that need to be resolved before the transfer occurs. The landowners asked that the grade and washout and seating be addressed again. There was some final grading that was done over there, and it's had some, some issues, so it does need to be, it needs to be corrected regardless of whether the property is sold. So we'll need to get somebody back in there to touch that up and get it smoothed out and seated. And then also, we need to get the, make the easement in place and have the attorney draft that before we go through any of the paperwork or signing of the property. So, those are the two things. I guess, Ben, did I, did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Or did I misrepresent?
No. Basically, I guess from the work that was done from Eagle Ridge, there's still spots behind Beckers and DeWinters that, they came in and leveled it off last fall and never got seated down. So it's just dirt sitting back there, and they put the barricades for the washout, but nothing ever got seated. So it's washed down over the intake, over the manhole cover anyways already. And I believe behind Whittles by the lift station, there's still some back there. I haven't been back to my document, Leroy, that it's still need to be taken care of back in there from the construction and infrastructure work in there, but otherwise, that's what I'm doing.
Now, they did seat all that down. It's just some of it's washed out, and some of it, they did some grading because there was a, there was a ponding area back there.
Yeah, it was graded where it was pawning more, or kind of re-appropriated and kind of go back into where it shouldn't be down on the two intakes. And so you maybe scalped some down from up there, and I don't think it ever got re-seated last fall the way it looks, because nothing came out this far, so.
So, that's the only option?
All right. Thank you, Ben. Do we have any written comments or objections?
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay. Do we have any comments or objections from the general public in attendance this evening?
[laughing]
There being no more comments or objections on the matter of proposed vacation and the subsequent conveyance of a parcel of land known as Knights Boulevard, Blackbird First Edition, City of Humboldt, State of Iowa. I will close the public hearing at 5:39. For our next public hearing, being the time and place for scheduled public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget amendment, I will open the public hearing at 5:40. Aaron, comment?
Uh, the budget amendment is the same as the, as what was considered at the previous meetings. Vast majority of changes that were included in the budget amendment were projects that were unplanned, essentially just came up throughout, through the course of the year. That's one of those things where you're looking at it in a crystal ball, hoping that you can budget out a year and a half. Sometimes that doesn't happen. And then also, some overruns, like the, obviously the pool, that's an overrun. Just things along those lines. Nothing, no large changes to the budget. The overall variances stay the same. The funds stay the same. It's not a, no situation where you're amending it, and, you know, one of the fund balances is getting hit harder than everything else, so.
Do we have any written comments or objections on file?
Uh, no, we do not.
Do we have any comments or objections from the general public in attendance this evening? There being no more comments or objection on the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget amendment, I will close the public hearing at 5:42. On our new business, we need a motion to approve a request for a street closure and a waiver for vendor fees from the Cobra City Chamber of Commerce for a downtown sounds event on Friday, June 6th, 2014.
Uh, the chamber is hosting its first downtown sounds of the year, and would like to request this summer to be closed down for the event. This will be the Humboldt Idol event that they have every year, and it will be held on the block next to U.S. Bank like in these previous years.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we need a motion to approve a request for a street closure and a waiver for vendor fees from the Humboldt Area Arts Council for the 2014 Arts Festival event on Saturday, June 14th, 2014.
Uh, the Arts Council is holding its annual arts festival at John Brown Park. I'd like to request also the same streets that were blocked off this year, the previous years. It's the exact same closures.
That earlier this year?
Uh, I think it's just in early weekends, because it's still following.
Is that?
Is it not?
Were they, was there a tree or something there? I see we've got a lot of mulch, there's a mess there, stuff there kind of by the, to the north side of the fountain there anyway, the large hole there. There was piles of stuff dumped there the other day. I didn't know what we're doing in that area.
I know they've pulled out some evergreens that were in there that had died. And one of them was split down the one side. So I know they've pulled out two large evergreens in there. That might be what's there. Honestly, I can't remember. I know there's also, they're gonna pull out the dugout, the back stuff that's in there, because it's completely shot. Nobody really ever uses it. So, they're gonna pull that, we'll get that out. We'll discuss that at the park coordinating last week, so.
Will the ver ground be running then?
Wasn't.
Will the ver ground be going around then, or?
[laughing] It should be. They're working, they're working their hardest. The parks guys are really getting pushed up against it with getting the pool ready and the picnic tables. And grass has fortunately been growing very fast for them. With Memorial Day, they've got the cemetery and getting all, everything tip top. But I know, I've been choosing one thing to talk to them about every few days, considering they've got so much going on. So, getting the benches in down at the downtown plaza is one of the things. Wanted to get those in so that the people who paid for the memorials can see it, and then.
There'll just be a lot of kids at this event.
Oh, yeah.
You can see the green fence.
Oh, they'll definitely, okay. They'll be definitely ready for that. I'm sure it'll be ready for Memorial Day.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we need a motion to approve a request for a street closure for the Three Rivers Running Club for the 2014 Fourth of July 5K run down Sumner Avenue.
That's a clumsy word.
Yeah.
Um, the Three Rivers Running Club is looking to host a run on the Fourth of July that starts and ends at the Humboldt Area Arts Council. The run would go down Sumner Avenue and return on Sumner Avenue. The street would need to be blocked off for an hour or so while the runners were out for the 5K run in the morning. The cross streets would be barricaded with volunteers there to crossing to allow traffic through when the runners had passed and the street is clear for traffic to proceed. Um, this is.
There are no parking on Main Street then, during that time, or?
They, it'd have to be completely closed down for that, for that morning. And that's why.
Businesses are happy about that, aren't they?
Well, that's, that's why it's coming to the council.
It'll be a lot pickled about it.
It's between eight and nine, and honestly, there's not a lot going on down between eight and nine AM.
Farmer's Market, is that a Saturday, is that?
That is, Fourth of July.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday, okay.
So.
Nine to 10?
Yeah.
Or eight to nine?
Eight to nine. Yeah. I mean, I know it's, and I, when I spoke with, John?
Greg?
Greg Wood. The, I told him, you know, that's something the council's gonna have to consider because it's gonna be closing down Sumner for a full hour in the morning. And it's not something to do lightly, so.
No, no, people crossing. Be interesting.
But, you know, I, I think it's nice that they're trying to continue the 5K like the hospital had the previous year. You know, I think it is clumsy to run down Sumner, and you know, their thought is, wow, it'd be fantastic to run down Sumner with all the people in someplace. But, you know, that is, that is gonna be difficult, so.
Will they furnish the people to, to get across when there's no runners?
They said they might have 14, 14 volunteers, or how many volunteers for each cross?
For no biker?
Yeah.
I guess it's worse.
I'm gonna move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next, discussion and possible action on the flashing, flashing signal repairs on Fifth Street North at Taft School.
Um, the signal control box is nearly 20 years old and needs to be replaced. Considering the previous discussions of the council on the crossing, Leroy rounded up the, the two options for replacement. The first is simply to replace the box and install LED lights on the existing poles. And this runs $1,339.90. And the second is to use a large flashing LED stop sign. And there's a picture in the council packet. And that's for $9,309.90. It's extraordinarily more expensive, but the.
At least half the people run through that stoplight. We need something there, you know.
Is the LED lighting gonna be a lot better?
Leroy, do you wanna?
So this one, only, you'd only see this when it's turned on. You'd always be a black.
Yeah, and these are two flashing LED white lights.
You mean for the 12-inch light, for the flashing light you're talking about, John?
Yeah, the, the cheap one.
Yeah.
The 1339.
It'd be about five times brighter than what it is right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah. LEDs are like downtown.
Even, even with the red, it's gonna be red, right?
Yep. It'd be sending 12-inch. The difference is, is that you've got 124.90 for the flashing beacons, or you will spend the 79.70. As far as the back panel, the clock, and the service, it's all the same. It's 1195 has come out no matter what. It just depends on whether you want to put a LED stop, 36 by 36 up there, or if you want the 12-inch LED.
Well, I guess if we bought the cheaper one, that did work out a couple years, we could spend $8,000 in it or something.
Well, and what do we have there now? What are those?
We have a 12-inch.
Are those 12-inch?
Ah, it may not be 12-inch. It might be 10-inch.
Six or eight, seven or eight, or something like that, maybe.
Might be eight to 10-inch. I guess I've never measured it, but the new LED would be a 12-inch.
Yeah.
That's a big.
I think that'd be a lot bigger.
It's a lot bigger.
Than what we have now. I would make the motion that we do the 1339 ones and see what happens.
The only, the one problem I see there is that the people, if you're coming from the east to go west, you don't know those are on.
Yep.
Because if you pull up, pull up to pull out, you know, you think that the light's on, you don't know the light's on, and.
But they have, you know, but they have a stop sign anyway.
Yeah, right.
They're supposed to stop anyway.
They're supposed to stop in, but you don't know if the car moved for you, is gonna, you know, is stopping or not. You know, you think you're, yeah, I guess that's the only. I don't know how we would ever correct that, but it's just, that's just always something I've noticed. You're not sure when to pull out or not, so.
Yeah.
If there's, because there's no flashing light that faces to the east. Just the flashing lights that face north and south, right?
Just north and south.
Will there be any way to tie something in so that people would know that that light's on? Or is that, would that not work for us?
The only thing I'd do is talk to general traffic to see if they would put in another light and connect it and have it facing 4 on 3rd. It might be a little expensive because you're in a worse environment.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, that's just always something I've wondered about, because when you pull up there and stop, you think, is that light, you know, is it on? You know, so you wait for the car, then the car stopped. Could've gone two minutes ago, but you waited for the car, because you didn't know if they were gonna stop.
I can get a price from it if you like.
Oh, no, it just, it was just something. We don't have to, it just.
What if you keep the existing light, turn it 90 degrees, and put the new light beside it?
You mean have two of them on the same post?
No, well, just put a new post in right beside it. Just turn the one that's there now 90 degrees, so, you know, they can see that the school, you know, light is on.
You try it.
You know?
I just, that's just something I was talking about.
I know what you mean.
Yeah, it just, you just don't know if the car's stopping, and then, if you pull up, you, you think, okay, they're gonna stop, school time, you pull up, oop, should've pulled out.
Yeah.
Might not have just asked, you know, Leroy, just, just.
I don't know.
You know, it was a simple deal, or if it's not a simple deal or something, whatever, for us anyway, so.
They might have an idea also.
Yeah.
They might have something that we could on both those.
With, that's what, as a website, yeah.
I'm sure they've dealt with it before, so it might be just as well if we ask them. They're the experts on it.
Okay. If you're in line.
Nope, I'll check with them.
Okay. Thank you, Leroy.
Thank you.
I'll draw my move.
Okay.
So you want me to bring that back?
That's what's bringing that, giving us an idea. I know it's, you know, it's, it's just something to think about anyway, at least, so.
Okay.
All right. Next, discussion and possible action on the water plant roof ponding issue proposal for repairs.
Uh, the roofing company that is subcontractor for the water plant renovation submitted a bid to eliminate the ponding on the water plant roof that was left by Roof Guard. The roof is under warranty by Duralast, and would not recommend accepting the bid if any damages in the future due to ponding would be covered by the warranty. I actually, I need to pull it up here, it's in front of me. But the bid, it's about 11,000.
Would Duralast check that again more here, or would somebody else work on that with Leroy?
It would keep the warranty in place. We talked to Duralast about it, and the warranty doesn't get, doesn't expire because somebody else, uh, somebody else, because they're also authorized to use Duralast, so Duralast would recognize it. But, you know, there is, there is some ponding that's going on up there. I mean, there's ponding on the library roof too. I don't think any of these libraries ever have any ponding on them. But this is quite a bit more than what you'd see on most roofs. We haven't experienced any leaking. Any leaking would be covered by Duralast. The actual proposal is $10,930. And so, to me, it's, that's Duralast's cost if it does leak. It's their $10,000, not the city's $10,000.
How much do we withhold though, from the other company? We're on that like 25,000 if we forego for them not fixing the roof and stuff that we took back.
Yeah. We took back, I mean, there is, there's definitely enough that was taken back from the other contract to cover this cost. Part of that was, uh, part of that was chewed up by engineering fees from every engineer constantly getting us at the roofing company.
But it's still left more than 11,000 dollars.
Still left more than Duralast's dollars. But, you know.
Does it, does the people that are working on the plant now think this would be a better, you know, a good idea, not for down the road, for us and stuff anyway, for longevity to fix this now, rather than not fixing, I guess?
I think, I think that, you know, the engineer's, Lance's comment was, you know, having ice on that roof is gonna, is gonna increase, and he said, you know, if somebody's up on the roof, it's a sin, right? Um, you know, there is a fair amount of area that does have that pond, ponding on it. I think that the engineer's answer is, it's always gonna be better to replace it, but they always like spending money.
Okay, the thing, you know, we've got, we've got a bid for $11,000. We'll nev, we'll never get that cheap bid again. They're here now, they're, they're working on the roof. I'm just, I guess that's the only reason I would even consider it, is that if we have an issue down the road, it'll cost us 11,000 for somebody to come look at it, in time we get an engineer in there again and stuff and everything. So, I guess we save the money from the project for that reason, that's, you know.
But the flip side is, if they did come back, that's on the bill. Duralast has to cover it.
If it leaked, right. But, but the wear and tear on the roof would be, you know, would be saving $11,000 in a, in a positive problem anyway, if something happened with additional weight and stuff, so. But it's just, I just hate to see us not do it if it was a good idea. I guess that's the only reason I wanted to ask that, is that.
How long is the warranty on the roof?
The.
From Duralast?
15 years.
15?
It's a 15-year warranty, parts, material, anyway.
What would they have to do to fix this? I mean, what is it that they're gonna do? Just, they have to tear it off and raise it, or, I mean, is there?
They have to reform it, reslope it, and get it to, where's that?
Got a drawing there.
There, back there. Here's a drawing. They essentially take everything and slope it back off to the sides.
Well, it's what, it's what should've been done originally.
Yeah. They had elevator.
Where's the ponding at?
Where the, the penthouses on the, um.
Okay.
On the water plant.
Okay.
It's a little bit east, northeast of that.
How deep a ponding is it?
Clint?
Do you know how deep that ponding is? What is it, about two, three inches?
Yeah, it's a fair amount. You open that door, you just kind of right, it's right out there, kind of. But, yeah, it's a couple.
How often do you, how often you're out on the roof when it might be frozen and somebody could get hurt?
I know, we check the line, line, you know, probably.
So you're out there pretty frequently?
Couple times a month. You know, do just climb up and just check to see where the levels are.
That sensor's gonna be inside though now, isn't it?
Yeah.
The alarm sensor. Yeah. We want to have it fixed and use the retainage that we kept back to possibly save the roof and not have a law, or not have a insurance claim from somebody getting hurt. I mean, if there's, there's so many variables.
Well, we're spending $6 million to fix the building up and make it nice. Hate to see us not spend $11,000 to really make it nice.
And we kept the retainage, we kept the retainage from the other contractor, and I'd hate to have somebody slip and fall because we didn't do it, and then we've got a, then we've got a workman's comp claim if something does that. I mean, I, I don't know.
Is this something, is this something they add to the roof, or do they have to actually tear the roof off and start over?
They tear it off. They're gonna leave, they'll leave some of the insulation, but they have to build it up more to get the sole right. So, all of the membrane essentially in the pond area will be, well, beyond the pond area, until they can get back to the seams. They'll have to replace every square that's.
Any idea how long the project that is?
Can't be too long for $11,000.
Yeah, they move pretty fast, too. Cowling.
Couple days or?
Yeah. I don't, and they've got work to complete. The transition between the new addition and the old water plant, they, that parapet that's there has to be finished up and the flashings and stuff. And they haven't finished that up because they were waiting to, to talk about this, because they didn't want to put anything on that was gonna have to be pulled back off. So they have to come in no matter, no matter what. So, and I, I do agree. I mean, the 11,000 is, that, compared to what we thought the bid was gonna be like, that's pretty low for, for what we thought.
It is for what I, what I was anticipating.
Yeah. So, I mean, it is a very reasonable cost.
I don't know. I would make the motion that we fix it to possibly forego any damage to the roof or any injury claims that we might, from people being up there having to work on it. So I would make a motion that we go ahead and fix it and use the retainage from the previous.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Which I'm sure has already been spent.
Oh, yeah.
I would second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to fix the existing roof and redo it. All those in favor?
Aye.